Seeing no follow-ups, Ms. Cook called a vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item I-11, City Attorney, please.
We have another resolution in 2025 approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Palm Coast and the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for the temporary assignment of executive staff member.
Mayor, City Council, I place this on your agenda. We have been working through with the Sheriff's Office an agreement to have, the Sheriff calls it, an executive on loan for the summer months we have from June until September. I just really want to make sure that we maintain your priorities and navigating the budget process will be a, is what I will be doing, and so an extra set of eyes and hands in our city operations would be very helpful as we're navigating this time in this transitional period. Chief Strobridge has offered to help us, and he would be reviewing processes and policies and procedures. So this agreement is with the Sheriff's Office. We are not hiring Chief Strobridge directly. We would be paying the Sheriff for Chief Strobridge's services. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, there's one just tiny minor amendment I want to add to it. It's on, it's in Section 4 indemnification, the second paragraph. It currently says, "The City of Palm Coast shall provide through City Attorney and/or City of Palm Coast insurance carrier the Chief of Staff with legal representation." I'm adding one more thing in there. It should be Chief of Staff and Sheriff because the Sheriff is the Sheriff Department. Since they're loaning him, just in case, in an unlikely scenario, there is some type of suit, we cover that if the Sheriff is getting sued. So that will be added in there.
Any discussion from the DIAS?
Just generally speaking, wanted to make sure that this agreement is not in any way a violation of our charter or any of our policies and procedures.
No, like Ms. Johnson said, that this is a, an agreement with the Sheriff's Department, not with the Chief. We're, we're not hiring him or anything like that. We're, we're just paying the Sheriff's Department for the services that he's coming over and helping us with, and then the services that he's not able to offer the Sheriff's Department while he's helping us.
I had a question, if I may. So in terms of contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Office and avoiding any conflict of interest there, scope of work in terms of that, that the Chief would be excluded from any of those on behalf of the city?
Yes, the Chief is not doing any city budget operations for us. He, he is doing his job for the Sheriff and, and that is it, for the budget specifically.
And in his job description that is attached to this, it says he's not allowed to do any budget.
I just wanted to make sure, clarify, make sure everybody else was aware too, that there is no conflict in that way.
Yes, and Mayor and City Council, I'm still operating under the same guidance that was given during the five-year public safety plan from your joint workshop, that we are following through with that plan. So unless there's different direction given, that is what we are moving forward with from the Sheriff's Office.
Right, so there's no like material change? We've got it like 98, 9% fleshed out essentially?
Yes.
Any further discussion from the DIAS?
No.
Well, I guess I'll comment on this here. I don't know if Shake, if Shakespeare was writing this, if he had wrote it as a tragedy or a comedy. Because I didn't find about, find out about this till yesterday. Pierre from Flagler Live probably had the article written before I was ever contacted. So this, this is a sad day for this, this City Council. And, and I hate, I don't want to, I don't want to cause drama. But we had a chance to hire someone to be the City Manager, and, and you guys shot it down. So here we are asking the Sheriff to loan us a, his, one of his chiefs, which I have no problem with, with the Chief at all. We're going to pay this guy $68,000 for three months. You know, supplement the Sheriff's Department that they handle it. And I don't, like I said, I don't know if Shakespeare would write it as a comedy or a tragedy. But I can't believe this is where we're at. You know, we've wasted all those time, that time and resources trying to hire a City Manager. You guys narrowed it down to two people, and you couldn't agree on one person. But here we are backfilling that position to give Lauren an acting City Manager to help her do her job. This is tragic, and it's an embarrassment. Any further discussion from the DIAS?
I just, yeah, on the, how was the payment amount decided upon?
It's the difference between what the Assistant City Manager makes and then supplementing some of the Sheriff's resources because he will have to train up. And since Chief Strobridge will be gone, another person will be acting in that capacity. So it's the difference of that. So it's some of what was already budgeted for the Assistant City Manager's salary, and then the Sheriff's compensation for moving someone up in his organization since Chief Strobridge will be here.
So when, when I discussed it with, this with Chief yesterday, when he happened to call me at 3:00 in the afternoon to talk to me about this here, there is no mention of any money. You know, when I borrow, if I borrow a wrench for my, my brother to fix my motorcycle, I'm not going to pay my brother $30,000 to borrow that wrench. So we're paying, we're going to pay this man $68,000 to come in to supplement our City Manager when we had a chance to, to hire a City Manager. So Lauren could probably concentrate on the budget while the City Manager got their feet wet. But the whole deal was, we needed somebody that could do the budget, that was immersed in the budget. And here we are, hiring an outsider to come in to supplement, to help her with operations. That's an embarrassment. I just want the city to know that. And you can call me and ask whatever you want. This is an embarrassment for this city. I'll open it up for public comment.
Hold on, I'm not done. So I have another question. With regards to the funding for this, where, where is this actual funding coming from?
The City Manager's salary line item, and in the City Manager's budget, we'll be moving money from the City Manager's salary line item in that Personnel Services to the Sheriff's, because we're contracting through to the Sheriff.
Okay, so this comes out of your budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
Public comment? Mr. Davis, you were ready to chomp on this at the beginning of the meeting. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Davis. Tonight I want to address the, the decision to bring the Sheriff's Chief of Staff as an Assistant City Manager despite already having an acting City Manager, a Chief of Staff, and a fully-staffed executive team. Let's be honest, this move doesn't inspire confidence. It creates a clear conflict of interest during budget season. Placing someone who helps negotiate your largest outside contract into a management role over city operations while taxpayers reimburse his salary. And then the Florida Statute 112.313, public officers are prohibited from holding employment or contractual relationships with entities doing business with their agency. The Sheriff's Office holds a $9 million contract with this city. So not only is this ethically questionable, it may be legally questionable too. The message it sends that internal accountability isn't working, and rather than fix that, leadership is being outsourced. Meanwhile, residents like me are still paying the price for that lack of accountability. My property flooded because of an elevated infill home the city approved without proper drainage planning. I spent two years providing documentation and participating in meetings, and I'm still told construction to be determined, funding to be determined, timeline to be determined. So while the city acts swiftly to reshuffle leadership and approve high-level hires, the issues impacting residents like mine remain stalled. This isn't about politics, it's about priorities. You can bring in all the outside help you want, but it doesn't change the fact the city staff made decisions that put my home in harm's way, and no one has been held accountable. Palm Coast doesn't need more titles. It needs someone to take ownership of the consequences residents are living with. And before I close, I want to thank Vice Mayor Pontieri and Councilman Miller for staying engaged with residents like me. I appreciate your time and transparency. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jeremy. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Jeanie, Section C, Palm Coast. Didn't previous Mayor Holland create that position of Assistant Manager? This is almost an admission that our Acting City Manager cannot do her job. And with the Sheriff's Department being the largest contract on the general fund, this is seems, this seems to be a very big conflict of interest, especially the creative way of transferring funds. And of course, our mayor is always the last one to ever find out anything. This $68,000 for three months. Whatever happened to, hey, I'll help you, but I'll help you for free because we're all in this together? This doesn't make sense, and it seems corrupt.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Shelley?
Darlene Shelley K, Section. And I agree with Jeremy and the woman that spoke before. My comments were going to be on the conflict of interest aspect of this. Don't we already pay for services from the Sheriff's Department? We already pay for that.
It, it is definitely a conflict of interest. I can't see how it can be argued that it's not. Ms. Johnson, is she suggesting that she's going to take $68,000 from her salary? That, from what I understand, she doesn't qualify to hold because she doesn't A, live in our city, and B, have the qualifications that are necessary when you were interviewing for a City Manager? Is that money coming out of her salary to give to this Sheriff? If it's true what Mr. Jeremy Davis said about it being illegal, I can, I can see how that might be a possibility. It's definitely a conflict of interest. It's definitely an admission that despite the millions of dollars in salaries that we pay for the employees of Palm Coast, that you don't have the capacity to cover the necessity, the job that needs to be done? How does that even happen? Mayor Norris, you're completely right. We had the opportunity to have any of the qualified City Managers that came up before us. But for reasons that were not your fault, they were sent away without giving their, their whiteboard speeches? You know, and then, and dwindled away to nothing. Why is that? I have my opinion on why that is, especially when folks come up here advocating for Ms. Johnson to stay on in her position. Apparently, she works very well with, with the local developers, as do many of the council and previous council members. Work very well with the developers, and the developers get their way, even though the safety, health, and welfare of the residents are indeed negatively affected. But the city employees will come up here and say, this is great for the local residents. This is going to improve their quality of life. We all know that's not true. And we all know that the decisions that have been made have lowered our home values, put our children at risk, put our health at risk, put our quality of life at risk, taken away our peace in our homes. And I think it's unfair, and I think it's unlawful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jeanie, you can't come back up unless we open it up for public discussion. We have to have, I'm sorry, Ms. Denise, you got an issue? You got a comment? Come on up.
So I can't?
No, you can't. You've already had one comment.
Okay, gotcha.
How's your daughter doing, by the way? Is she doing okay?
Yes.
Yeah, you missed Denise.
Denise Henry, P, Section. I'm really against this. We have such high salaried people on the city staff. Surely somebody can step up to the plate and handle anything that needs to be handled. I don't think we have to farm it out to the Sheriff's Department. I think we have to look in-house and get this done in-house.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Hey, we need, Mark Webb, Palm Coast?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I, like you, Mayor, just discovered this event, this need, that we're reading in the papers before any of us know. I think what disturbs me the most is the lack of transparency of a need with the upcoming efforts of the budget. We are already struggling with perception of Palm Coast City Council. It's there. We hear it all the time. We fight it all the time. All I can go by is what I read in the Flagler News. So this is what I read. She didn't even have to ask for permission. She had full authority without the council to move forward and make this move. That's fine. There's plenty of contractors and people with ability in this area to supplement and help us get the job done the next few months. Going into the Sheriff's Department, asking for help or being recommended help, we don't know how that conversation occurred, from the single largest contracted group that we deal with, appears bad. Just the presence of the transparency appears bad. And to say that a gentleman is going to be able to do the job in assistance during the time of the contract development, and by the way, the, the news reported already came out and said, there's like an $11 million rough number that the Sheriff's Department's going to ask for us already when we haven't even seen or know what's happening from the city level. Perception is everything. It's why you there. It's why we sit in here and listen to all of this information and demonstration, and yet, we learn about it after it's already done. This is nothing more than showing the citizens that, well, let's be transparent. As far as I know, as far as I already read, numbers are done, contract's ready to go, he's ready to move over, he's going to wear civilian clothes. You probably already have an office for him. Doesn't look very good, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Sloan?
I was just going to go home, but it's pouring. Also, I couldn't walk away after hearing the negative comments about Ms. Johnson. And I know the whispers are going to come next while she represents the developers and the builders. That's true. And that means that, I'm just going to call you Lauren, that Lauren and I disagree a lot. I've have a lot of, we have a lot of conflicting conversations where I'm like, why this, why that? And I'm going at her. It's the truth. But she works really hard, and she's a person of integrity. And I have one rule about how I operate my life, and that's I have to be able to lay my head down on a pillow with a clean conscience every night. And I couldn't do that if I didn't come up here and defend her and her integrity. And I think that shows by coming to this meeting, putting it on the agenda at all. As the last gentleman stated, she didn't have to do that. It is unfortunate that you just found out. You're the mayor, I'm a resident. But I also just found out, I didn't even grab an agenda because I thought I knew everything that I was looking at today. That, that also said, I know there's concerns about conflicts of interest. While I personally have no concerns with Sheriff Staley or Chief Strobridge, I think they're both outstanding gentlemen and leaders. My advice would be to consider the precedence that you're setting. You know, while we have great leadership in our Sheriff's Department now, I always think like, what happens down the line? Another Sheriff comes in, maybe they're not great. And then you can say, oh, well, the precedence was, you know, this happened before, so now we have the opportunity to do it again. That'd be my only warning. And, you know, there are several positions throughout the city that are not filled. And that means that the executive team and department heads are floating in many ways. As you all know, you know, you guys meet with them regularly, I'm sure. So I think that is important for the public to know, and how much work they do. And just sad to see you guys get beaten up and staff get beaten up when you all do so much work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I'm sorry, I skipped something on the DIAS. Do we have a motion to approve this?
We don't need a motion.
Oh, we didn't? While the other resolutions, we did a?
The ILA.
It's a, an ILA, it's a resolution to?
So we are, we are voting on this?
We are voting.
Okay, so I have a question that, I have a couple of questions. Because I was under the understanding that City Manager or Acting City Manager did not have to bring this forward to us as Acting City Manager could hire as needed. Is that not true?
Yes, in the policies and procedures, the City Manager can hire any type of temporary workers, any, any staff, really. So, yes.
Okay, so then why are we voting on this?
It's a protection, not only for the city, but also for the Sheriff and the Sheriff's Department. There are identity clauses in the agreement, as well as it lays out proper terms and for consideration. Anything else, Marcus, you wanted to add?
Yeah, just in negotiating, talking with the Sheriff's Attorney, Sheriff's Department, we both just thought, in the instance of time and everything, this was the best way to go, and doing it this way. They wanted to do it through an interlocal agreement. You can only do an interlocal agreement between agencies with the City Council approving it.
Okay, so with that, Ms. Johnston, what is the need here? You've been doing, and I know you've been doing your job and the job of City Manager, but I think for the public's benefit, the need needs to be vocalized.
Sure, so there have, there's been direction from City Council, and the public has expressed interest in having an outside person come in and look at our processes and our policies and our personnel, our org chart. Are we being as efficient as we can? So in looking at, do we have talent in-house that could do that? Yes, but we are not fully staffed. My Assistant City Manager position is open, the Community Development Director position is open, and the Utility Director position is open. We have the Utility Director position posted. We need to hire that position. It's been a desire of the City Council to get that person on board as quickly as possible. Chief Strobridge offers many years in local government experience. He's a great judge of character. He can help us with that process. So in efforts to maintain City Council's priorities, stay on track with all the various initiatives that come at us any given day or Tuesday, whether it's from the residents or from City Council, trying to maintain that course of business. An extra set of eyes doing an outside review, helping with the DOGE initiative. That's why it's helpful to have this.
Okay, thank you. I will, I just want to say, I, you know, to impugn the integrity of Chief Strobridge and Ms. Johnston is despicable. She could have hired without bringing this forward. I'm sure if they really wanted to, you know, keep this under wraps, they didn't, they didn't have to go the ILA route. And, and we probably could have, could have just hired. To say that Ms. Johnston has a relationship with developers that is somehow benefiting them is laughable. And I will tell you, during the last couple of weeks is just one example. Because we as council said, hey, are there some projects in the, in the Parks Master Plan that we can remove that we really don't think we're going to have the monies to upkeep the legacy costs, the personnel, the maintenance, all of those things? So is it, is it actually realistic? And we as council said, it's probably not. We could, it's, you know, if we had, if we lived in a utopia and had endless dollars, sure, but realistically, probably not. So we removed those. I talked to Ms. Johnson afterwards, and I said, hey, you know, are you, are you okay? How are you feeling about this? And she was really bummed out that we took out parks to reduce that fee and be more realistic with this, because she worked on those for a really long time. Those were her babies. So, you know, that's just one example. And I'm so, I'm really, really heated right now because the amount of work that goes into trying to really balance so many interests in this community, and the amount of work that's been on her shoulders in the last year. And I hear you, Mayor, we chose not to hire a City Manager, but that's because we didn't think that somebody was the right fit, and that's more important. The right fit is more important than the right now. So, you know, is this ideal? No, but theoretically, we'd be paying a City Manager and Assistant City Manager anyway. So we're not spending any more money than we hadn't budgeted for anyways. And I fully expect that with this position, Ms. Johnston, that we are going to see deliverables, that we will see results. Because to the point of the residents, and I think to this council, we do have initiatives, we do have priorities. And when, with somebody else coming in, I fully expect to see actual work product that is accomplished. So with that, I don't have anything else to say, Mayor.
Is anyone going to make a motion to approve it?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. There's a second? I'm going to open it up for public comment one more time because I skipped the, the motion part to begin with. So Ms. Jeanie, you get to speak again. Make it quick, you better hurry up. Yes, ma'am.
I have a concern with the timing of all this. Apparently, this was brought up with, I don't have a qualm on him as a, as a person or his abilities, our chief. However, it's because of the, he represents that fund. He, he comes and brings that fund for the Sheriff's Department. He's the one that asked for those funds. He, he's the one that represents the funds for the Sheriff's Department. For him to come here and be involved with the funds, I see, I still see it's a very big conflict of interest. And for you to communicate with him a few weeks ago, as the article states, isn't that around the same time that you interfered with your replacement? With Doug, Doug Thomas? I think that's his name? So I'd be careful of this. I'm actually shocked that Sheriff Staley would even have anything, allow this mess. I would, if I was him, I would be avoiding this whole situation like the plague because it brings in too much questioning. It, it doesn't look good, especially with all the funds relating to their funds, the management funds. And you're claiming that it's coming from the management funds, and you're the acting manager. It's a mess. I'd avoid it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Darlene?
Darlene Shelley K, Section. I want to clarify, I did not mean to demean anybody up here. I know how hard Ms. Johnson works and how hard all you work. Just reading through 724 pages of, of the agenda is a full-time job. If you're going to go through it and analyze it, do some research on the things that are in there, you know, to determine if it's safe, to determine if it's going to benefit the residents, or if it's going to benefit AT&amp;T or the sub-companies. Your decision should be based on the needs of the residents and how it's going to affect our quality of life. It doesn't all come down to the money. And again, I do apologize if you got the impression that I was insinuating that nobody works hard. I know you work hard. My question, the amount of time that many of the city employees are working with the airport director, the developers, folks who are trying to upgrade their properties and get away from what they're entitled to, and try to get more just for profit? And to hell with what the comprehensive plan says about whether it's going to affect the quality of life for the residents, whether it's going to affect our safety, health, and welfare. Because we know some of these projects will. They will affect our water supply. Zoning up to heavy industrial is going to add more chemicals to our air and water. It's going to affect our environment. It's going to affect our animals, our children, our health. But that's not a priority, is it? And it's very sad that the priority is profits, that the priority is spending so much of your time meeting with developers and making special deals and giving them incentives and trying to?
and trying to upsell what should be offices and doctors' offices and things that are going to enhance our quality of life, things that are going to make it better, things that are going to make it beautiful. And that doesn't include storage facilities, doesn't include dollar stores, it doesn't include heavy industrial. And then it doesn't include allowing things that are going to harm us and our home values and our families, our neighbors, and our loved ones. Thank you.
Any further comment? We'll bring it back to the dais. Yes, sir.
I had one comment. And just in the job description, so this is probably information you may not have had for Chief Strobridge, it says, "No oversight involvement with city budget as relates to or pertains to the City of Palm Coast contracted services with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office." That, our lawyer was referring to that. It's very clear that that's not going to happen.
Because some people mentioned that. Yeah. Well, the whole, dealing with the Sheriff's Budget and the city budget, that's not, that's not my biggest concern. The biggest concern is we're in this situation. Any further comments from the dais? City Clerk called a vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris? The motion passes four to one.
Move on to the...